Places, so it's a great place to be. Um. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Has there been any changes since?
The addition of the bylaw for the zoning amendment for the hotel.
Okay, so that's added.
That is added to it now that we have had that public.
Okay. So just for clarification, the addition now is the rezoning, the two bylaws that we need to do at the hotel. And so we just completed the hearing. Okay, uh mover. Moved by the Council of Barak, seconded by Councilor McDonald. Any further discussion, changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Yes.
Thanks, Alana. Declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest with any of these letters. Okay, so when we get to those items, uh just acknowledge and then you'll have to later. Okay. Delegations, presentations, or petitions. We had the RCMP report on Monday and we don't have any other. Petitions, petitions right now. Okay. Public question period. We have one member of the public. Raymond, did you want to speak now or do you want to wait until I think it's?
Eight eleven.
Eight eleven regarding the setbacks.
I can speak now, sure. You can speak now, you said?
Well, you can speak now or wait until we get to the agenda item.
Oh, oh, wait.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make that clarification that we're not passing it over because you do get a chance to speak at the. At the actual agenda item, yeah. Okay, uh adoption of the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting. Moved by Counselor. Barak, seconded by Counselor Barrett. Any corrections, further corrections needed for those minutes? We had some on Monday, anything further? Seeing them all in favor? Area action items. Nothing on the list, we're good on that. New business. So we'll get it on the floor and then we've got some clarifications. So request for council decision for twenty twenty four one ten amendment to. The fees and charges, uh policy under schedule A. Moved by. Counselor Barrett, seconded by Counselor Day. Uh, do you want to just clarify some of the?
So with regard to the changes to the fees and services policy, there is really two. Main changes that we are making. The bulk of those changes are the fire service. Fees and services that and the the dog, anything protective services wise. And then the other topic was the. Seven dollar and fifty cents, the two two dollar and fifty cent increase to the. Skater. So in light of the discussion that and the questions that were being asked. Uh, the potential is that you could, council could say, no, we don't want to start charging seven dollars and fifty cents. And then just quash all of the changes, but that that does impact the fire service one. So when we get to the motion. You're going to have an option of two motions. The first motion will be, the first option you have will be to approve. The changes as presented, meaning both the fire service and the skate. Or option two is approve only the fire service ones, but not the skate ones. So that will be your two motions. If you chose option one, the motion would read that accepted as. And then the motion two would be inclusive of or exclusive to. The fire service ones. Um, further information, I know you did have more questions about the the skate. Sharpening, you wanted some numbers. Uh, what Director Krug has said was based on the number of participants in each of the categories, minor hockey, old timers, that type of. Those categories of the customers. Uh, there is four hundred and seventy eight people who could potentially ask for skate sharpening. Although, so the his numbers is basically if it if they were getting it based on once a year, it would be. Two thousand three hundred and ninety dollars is what we would make in skate sharpening. If we were to increase it to seven fifty, it would be three thousand eight hundred, or sorry, five hundred and eighty five, which is about eleven hundred dollars difference. That is the additional revenue. I did ask him if he has uh clear numbers on how many times they would be switching out for specialized sharpening. He does not have those numbers, although he is prepared to work on those numbers should you. Choose not to raise it, but do a hybrid, he just needs more work to do on the hybrid. Everybody clear on that? So your two choices will be. As presented, both the fire service as well as the skate sharpening, or option two is just the fire service. Changes.
So just a quick question, Cindy, Counselor Day, go ahead. Regarding the prices at five dollars for a regular sharp skating and ten dollars for modified or?
No, what what? So that would be a hybrid model. And he still needs to work on the administrative component of that. How do you know which skates to? Is it ones with the blue tag that you are specialized, ones not? So he has to flesh that out a little bit more. So it would be five dollars. Flat. What he is proposing is move it up to seven fifty flat rate all across. Or if you want to go back and work on the hybrid model, then he needs more time to do that.
Any further questions from council? Counselor Barrett?
I guess I just appreciate a general sense of what people are thinking that. This generated a bit more discussion than I was expecting and I learned a lot about skate sharpening and I didn't know. So I mean, it's not a hill I'm ready to die on or anything, but. In some ways, I kind of think of this as a nice little service we provide to residents of the community at a pretty low cost. And so that's kind of the thought that I had coming into this and. Just curious what others think if they're sort of the same mind or if people. Think we should change it.
Thank you, Counselor, and your Counselor Barrett. There, council members. Sure, Counselor McDonald.
I'm, I feel very similar to you, Steve. I don't think the. Minor uh revenue that's going to be extra revenue that be generated is uh necessarily a good way to. To get extra revenue, um. Providing that that there are a lot of young. News that that need to service.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald, Counselor Barrett. I feel similar as well. I think that what we've heard is that the potential increase in our revenue is is quite small and. The evidence that was provided for the protective services as well as the fire increases, to me felt very reasonable. Whereas for this one, I I'm not certain I see a true return on investment for these changes. And I think by keeping it at five dollars, it's the best route forward. It remains affordable for the individuals who can afford it. And then just to leave it at that right now.
Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? Okay, so I'm sensing you want to make the motion to approve the fire protection increases. And and leave it at that, not the skate.
Yes, I will make that motion for option two.
I'll second that motion for option two.
Talk it up with a nice in-kind service from the residents.
So I'll just read out option two, here is all that the new town council hereby approves amending the fees and. Charges policy FM dot zero two one, schedule A, inclusive of protective services amendments as presented. Moved by Counselor Barilic, seconded by Counselor Parrot. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion care. Thank you, Counselor Merrill. Yeah, if you can, if you can, uh whatever, we're doing a motion, um just just verbally uh wave your hand, that would be great. And we won't forget about you at the end of the phone line.
You're right, just having trouble using unmute.
Yeah, no problem, thanks. Um. Item number eight, two, request for council decision, twenty twenty four dash one twelve amendment to the MGs, those are. Nation and. Policy, this is um. The the one where we're adding the um. Uh, September thirtieth, truth and reconciliation day as a free donation of the community hall, so that that. Moved by. Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That will uh. Each of those would be a standing donation. The the request for council decision. The twenty twenty four dash one thirteen two dash twenty twenty four holiday hours for town facilities. Get this on the floor, motion by Counselor Barrett, seconded by Counselor Parrot. Any further discussion on any of these opening and closing? As it was clarified, some of these are mandatory days and then some of these staff holidays. Um. But the all of the other days will be open, then those staff having to work. Will then get days off in January that they would have missed during during this time. But it's just important during all these things that we do keep the doors open. Sometimes because uh families are looking for something to do. Counselor Barrett?
Yeah, just a quick clarification. So we have this. Copy on the desk here. It shows a closure on December thirty first, now that a revision from. The last. Yeah, so there were one extra closure from. What we talked about before. Who can this version?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion Gary? Alright, uh. Okay, request for council to sit eight to four. Request for council decision to intervene uh for the NP PC power rate hikes. And let's get this on the floor, moved by. Counselor Barrett, seconded by Counselor Day. Further discussion, a lot of clarification and discussion of previously, anything further people want to ask about this? Sorry, Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, I'm trying to be, I've heard anything back from the power corp. I know you had stated that in uh previous circumstances of the paper that. They're causing the invention, have we heard any back?
Yeah, it's actually the public utilities board kind of through the power corp, so we haven't heard anything further, yeah. But there's all the other community, oh, sorry. Going on and off, on and off here, all the other um communities are also asking the same question. So I I think there'll be enough political pressure that that's what will happen, yeah. If history is a good teacher, it's always happened in the past. Other questions on that, um all those in favor?
Yes.
Now we're into, I think, four, but as in wins, the first one is on the electrical. As in when for the twenty twenty five electrical and controls. Counselor McDonald is declaring a conflict of interest and you can take a break from the room. We just need a motion to get this on the table. Moved by. Also parents, seconded by Counselor Day. Okay, so this, the as in electrical and you can see. The um. The amounts of the people who who have been on this, any further discussions? Okay, all those in favor? Motion care. Counselor. McDonald back in. Request for council decision to tender where twenty twenty five. When uh road and ditch maintenance are required. You can get this on the table, moved by Counselor Days, seconded by Counselor McDonald. You can see this was um. That it submitted submitted was uh one one submission. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion. The next item, tender award twenty five as and when coming in mechanical and um. Just need a, I guess, motion, we don't have any conflict, we'll be brought here, moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Barrett. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Motion carries. Um. Item number eight, eight, uh tender award twenty twenty five as when utility or pilot repair. Get this on the table, moved by Counselor Parrot, seconded by Counselor Barrett. Any further discussion on this as and when? Well, all those in favor?
Yeah.
I think this is the last one. Nope, it's not, there's two, there's not a one. Tender for the award twenty twenty five as and when road fuel supply. Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any further discussion on this? All of those in favor? Motion care. Request for council decision, tender award twenty twenty five as and when brushing. Uh, item number eight, ten, put this on to the table, moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any further discussion? All of them there? Yeah. Okay, this is item number. Moving on to item number eight eleven, setback variance for care. Sweet on light industrial law conditional permit for caretaker suite on light industrial lot. Get a motion to get this on the table. Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Barrett. Discussion. Any further discussions? Okay, anything, go first of all, anything from council? Council in clarification or anything council wants to. Add before we go to the public?
We'll have a judge speak afterwards.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Raymond, go ahead and just hit the the little button and you'll be live. Just identify yourself and um. Yeah, maybe maybe even that you own.
Yeah, I'm Ray Waitman, I'm the neighbor of the lot, industrial lot, I own Iron Dog Horror Sports and uh a residential, well. The house was moved right next door to my shop. Uh, no development permit was put up when it was moved there. And it's way too close to my shop for the residential place. That place goes out, so does mine. So. I really don't think you should approve that. Okay, I only agree that that being.
Any questions uh? By council, uh Raymond, for clarification or anything? Counselor Barrett?
For your shop, you you meet the setback requirements, right? You don't have any variance on your shop being less than the setback requirement? No.
Any further comments by council and then? If there aren't any further comments on council, because this is a little bit. Um. There's a few options here, I'm gonna let the SAO explain some of the um. Uh. What what the next moves are, so. But I would do want to let other counselors have an opportunity to ask any other questions or clarifications before we. Go to an explanation from Sandy. Anything, any further comments? Counselor Barrett?
All right, uh, were you aware of the correspondence received from the Director of Protective Services about? Is it uh? His look at the property with the setback distance? It will be made it aware, okay? Because we have information in our packages, I'm sure if you had seen it or not, uh regarding the fire chief having a look at it, just see whether. Was any concern that in the fight by protective services, so. So you're not aware of that? No, okay.
Cindy, you want to explain what um what process we have for council moving forward?
So the development permit has not been issued yet. Depending on your vote to allow this setback variance. Then the development permit will be issued tomorrow morning. There will be a fourteen day period where Raymond is here tonight, but he would have been notified. When this development permit came, he would have been notified as well as the other adjacent properties, so I. Off the top of my head, uh within a hundred meters of the property, so that would include other properties along industrial road as well as that. So all of those neighboring properties would be notified that a development permit permit has been issued. No work or anything like that can be done on that property. In that building, to that building, until that fourteen day period is there. Should somebody within the fourteen day period. Appeal, it then needs to go to an appeal board of which. Council members will be part of that appeal board as well as the mayor and the SAO development pieces. Where we would review in more detail where that variance is. Uh, you know, the concerns identified by Mr. Wayman and then make a decision. So some of those decisions could be. It's fine. Another decision could be it needs to be moved somewhere else on the property to be within. The setbacks allowed. Those are really the two options that we could provide for. The property owner. Is Peter there? Oh, sorry.
I'm here, yes, that that information is correct.
Yes, on the screen is Peter Schultz, our development officer. He knows this better than I do, so Peter, if you could explain the process, but also to emphasize. No decision has been made until council gives approval tonight before that permit is issued, correct?
That is correct, um. Apologize on my informal dress, I was a little late getting into Fort Providence and I just got in as I was called. Uh, the. The. The residential building, which which is to be requested views as a caretaker suite. Uh. I spoke with the owner in September and I requested some additional information. At that time, before he moved the building, the building was moved without a development permit having been issued and it was placed. Within the setback zone. Um. So in order to. Make legal what has already been done, we would require both a conditional use permit for a caretaker suite and uh the side yard and rear yard setback. Variances which are. Too large for me as development officer to approve, they have to be approved by council. If council. Um. Approves the. Uh, the conditional use and the variance request, this development permit would be posted, there would be two week period for. Neighbors who would consider themselves affected. To launch an appeal, if an appeal was launched, council would have to create a appeal board or appeal committee. Within one month as per section three point three and three point four of the zoning by law. Which are also consistent with sections thirty to thirty two of the Community Planning and Development Act of the Northwest Territories. Uh, and the appeal board would have to, is a quasi judicial body, uh and it would be. It it would be logistically. Heavy, it's a, it uh. Evidence and these was prepared by government, by the staff, which is myself and others, and needs to be presented, and then there's hearing. Quasi judicial hearings, et cetera, and and really is considered. Uh, definite, if. Council did not um voted down. Um, the resolution. Presumably because of the setback or because of the caretaker suite usage, either one. Then. I would request. Um. Further direction from council. Whether the concern is whether it is because it's a caretaker for suite at the location. Or because it has to do with the setback or both, and then I can go back to the proponent. And say accordingly, if council doesn't like the caretaker suite idea, then the trailer is gonna. Uh, it's not gonna be able to be used as a caretaker suites, you're presumably are gonna want to move it to a different lot. Or if the concern is due to setbacks. Then I need to go to the the proponent and say, you're gonna have to move the building. Because you're not gonna get your setback. Um. And it's just a short distance, the purpose of setbacks in light industrial zones, usually the overriding concern has to do with fire. Um. The uh, the setback distances are set so that once doubled, so you know, two buildings, if the setback is four point five meters, the two buildings will be nine meters apart. That's considered. Reasonable for light industrial uses for the buildings to be set aside, when. Uh, building in a light industrial zone is closer than four point five meters. It can be a detriment to the neighbor because if they. Want to maintain that fire setback of nine meters, they need to push their building farther into their property. Um, and that's why the setbacks are there, um and that's why uh staff. Sent out a uh. Asked our fire chief to go out. And have a look at the property and see if there was um any immediate and noticeable. Um. Setback incursions that could affect the neighbor and the neighbor is now here and he's giving you a certain messaging. And I think that about summarizes the situation and the information that staff would need to proceed.
Any further questions for Peter, Counselor Barrett?
Yeah, Peter kind of got to a question that I was thinking, oh, well, um, he was talking. I just while Mr. Wayman's at the table, I just want to make sure I have no lingering question. Now, when you first spoke. You said you had a concern that it was a residence. Uh, being put there, now is that the concern that is could be to come a conditional use? Residents or the fact that it's just a building that's too close, doesn't matter what it's used for?
Actually, it's both because I run a business right beside there and I don't need traffic, I'm there beside there, I have a half million dollars in sleds in that yard. Traffic in and out, the other thing is if you're talking about development permits, if he doesn't have one, why has he been working on the house for the last two months? So that's. Then my other concern is too close to fire, a place goes out, it's right next door to my shop.
Right, and too close regardless of the building is.
Yes.
Doesn't matter what's right on my lot line, like it's way away from my fence. Okay. Thanks, I cleared up all the questions there.
Hey, thanks. Any, any further comments, Peter, on on this?
Uh, no, I think I, my presentation was uh. About as thorough as I can, uh leave the neighbors listed.
Okay.
Two concerns, one is the, about the caretaker suite use and the uh setback. I don't have any additional comment on on the setback, a caretaker suite. Is intended to be a non-permanent residence, it's meant to be a place where. Uh, someone that, you know, if there's lots of valuable items on the property, that it is a employee. That is staying there to assist in security. Um. And uh. Or they need to work late or they have very long days and you know, there's no place to stay in town or. Those kinds of, those kinds of uses. Um, it's not meant to be used. Um, ever as this light industrial park as a permanent habitation. That is the intent of the current zoning by law. That is the intent of the current zoning by law.
Okay, thanks, Peter, Council pair.
Thanks, Peter, an important uh, piece of information that you mentioned in your presentation was that you you attempted to engage with the proponent. Prior to the building being moved. And it sounds like. There wasn't uh, a dialogue that that resulted in the, you know, the the building not being moved to where it is. Would you be able to just provide a really brief summary around the engagement you had with the proponent? Because it sounds like the proponent sort of was aware, did it anyway, and is now asking for forgiveness.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to, uh, uh, make comment as to the the proponents, um, um, motivations. Uh, the initial contact with the proponent was, I believe, in the third week of September. And I remember he, I recollect and there are, in my report, there are emails from that time. I had some phone calls with him as well, my recollection is that he. Desired to move the building to create a caretaker suite and wanted a development permit for the move. And I remember that reviewing the information, I felt there was a need to have. A better site plan and photographs of the building. Um, and I remember telling him that. I prepared his development permit and if he could get me the information within a short period of time, cause I was. Going on a work trip or something. So I could, I could get it into the next council meeting and he said he would do it and then I got a note that he was gonna do it on time. And then October came and went and I, I actually forgot about the file. And then the information I had requested came in. I believe November seventh, which I was again traveling for a different project and I was actually sleeping in the. Airport at that time, so I didn't look at his file right away. Then I, you know, then I, uh, about a week later was, uh. Was asked to to expedite file. And uh, that's a crack it open, basically remind myself of what had happened, and, um. It became apparent that the communication in September was I want to move the building and the communication in November was have moved the building. And the photographs and better site plan that I had. I'm sure about the photographs, I'm not, I'm not hundred percent sure if I'm recollecting correctly on the. Site plan, I think I am, um, that information had come in, so the information that I. Really needed in September had now arrived in November. That answers your question.
Any further questions on this and then we'll get a clarification. But let's go, any further questions?
Do we have the date that the building is actually placed on the lot in its current position? If we don't know the exact date.
I do not have that information.
But what happened then?
You know, Raymond, do you know that answer?
Third week in September on Sunday, it was on the Sunday in third week. Okay, thanks.
And to clarify, there was no moving permit issued. So we don't know when it would have been moved because there was no permit issued. Because the development officer had asked for pictures that he didn't get until November.
Okay, so the, are there two separate motions here? It's, is it tied into one motion, do we have, is there a motion on the? Setback variance and then a motion on the conditional use?
It's all together.
No, uh, no, you're, you're worship, I, I select. For this building to be legal, it requires both motions. You, it can't be approved as a conditional use. Cause where it is, it would have to be moved or in any both at the same time. So I merged the two motions, but now thinking about it, I realize if you. Are comfortable with it being a caretaker suite, but you want it moved over. Um, you could, I could have separated the motions out and then you could approve the caretaker suite and don't, you know, not approve the setback and then I can go to the. The uh, proponent and say, you know, you can have this development permit, I need to move the building first.
Okay, so, um.
Yeah, Peter, I wasn't sure before we made the motion if. If Peter was gonna leave or not, but I would like to discuss this a little more just based on, um. The the initial policy on the variant setbacks, that maybe you can read it out, but I'm pretty sure it says that the only reason that we should. Uh, uh, have any, um. Why, why somebody should have this is due to undue hardship and I forget what else it says in the policy, but we actually have a policy now. While I'm looking back at thinking. Does this mean that, would it have met the criteria anyway? That's something we should think before we make the decision because. I don't see any undue hardship. Per se, for for them to be put in the building where it is, they could have put it somewhere else. Secondly, the development permit I've asked, um, wasn't issued and I asked if there was any. Consequences for that and, um, I just told that, yeah, there is, uh, there is and. But I, I don't know, has there been fine or any consequence? Put out towards and for not complying to the development permit then?
Not at this time. And uh, I can read you what the penalties would be, but it really is at council's direction. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, let me find him.
Actually, I, I'd be more interested than if you could read that policy on the initial variance setback, um. If it's in the package, I don't have it.
Yeah, the uh, the request for decision report mentions the, the criteria and the council to use when they're. Deciding on a major setback variance. Um, I'm sort of going from memory here, cause I said I, I was a little late coming into Fort Providence. One is undue hardship, I don't believe it passes that test, another one is something like undue expense. So moving the building. About a meter over will be quite expensive, so that. Could. These, yeah, it is expensive to move the building over by a meter or two to fit the setback. But it was not undue hardship that caused the building to be a place where it is at the present time. There wasn't any, anything else on the property that limited it being pushed so close to the corner.
Practical difficulties, not, not expense.
And so I guess my point here though is. It wouldn't have been expensive initially, it's because they didn't go through.
No, it would have been the same process, um, I would have. Then a protocol for development officer for a move is. Don't tell me where your building is coming from, tell me where your building is going to, tell me where you're gonna put it. Let me check that it meets, you know, basic specs for any other height or. With or, you know, other requirements that may be. That may be relevant and without causing undue time delay to the proponent. Cause you know, my time is money and you're, you're working to. For the betterment of the community as a whole, not just to be a regulator. So, uh, but the purpose of doing so is, you know, when I see on a clear map. The, the building is gonna go here and I see it says five feet or whatever it is, five feet, six feet on one side. I'm gonna check the side yards, is that maximum say four point five meters and I go, well, you know, it says four, it says you did, you did two meters, it says. Or whatever, I think it was one point seven two and it's supposed to be four and a half. So, you know, we're, you know, I'd work with the client on, on that and communicate why that regulation is there. And, uh, you know, agree on a, on a, on a, on a, the final resting place of the building. Um, and then I would go to council and say that. They wanna move a residential building to light industrial out, but they want to lose it for office space and for. Caretaker suite, which is consistent, but it requires condition use permit from council. You know, I've understood the situation, you know, he's, I can't remember, he's doing welding or something and. It's difficult to get welders up there and they need a place to stay while they're working, okay, that all makes sense, so that. There's a legitimate use for conditional use, so that would be how ideally this would have unfolded.
Barry, and then, uh, Raymond?
So when they moved the building, um, the morning of. One of the bylaw officers came down, looked at the building, why wasn't it brought to your concern for a development permit then? In the third week of September and why wasn't that brought forward? And the other thing is, the guy who owns the land, he's also an air and B and D guy, so. Who says he ain't gonna rent that out to someone just come in in town and stay next to my shop? That's my concerns, if there's just anybody could stay in there then.
Thanks, Raymond, call, Council Barrett.
Thanks, just reminding me that this motion is on the floor right now, right? Okay, um, well, I think on Monday, I initially didn't have a ton of concern. Uh, based on. A little bit of a deeper dive into the information and the timeline. The expressed concerns of an adjacent property owner. And the information provided by Mr. Schultz, um, I'll be speaking against this motion and I'll be intending to vote in opposition of it.
Thank you, Council Barrett. Any other comments from councils or the S A O? Go ahead, Council Barrett.
Sorry, it's the last. This to me is coming out more clearly as a lack of exercise in due diligence before all this stuff happened. So that's, uh. That's a deciding factor, I think, in my mind now that, uh, could we voting in opposition?
Anything further from council or the S A O?
Peter, sorry, Peter Salana here, um, I, I'm going to agree with Council Barak. It just could have all been avoided if the, uh, owners had simply followed the due process. And I think that would have alleviated the concerns of the neighbor because the rules would have been followed, so I don't support it either. That's it, thank you.
Any further comments, questions, clarification before we call the question?
Should you vote this down? Here, our development officer will work with the proponent to relocate the building within that. So there's two things to consider, one is. The setback, move the building so it is not at risk to any of the other properties in terms of. The second thing is the caretaker suite, so if you're gonna vote down this motion, you're gonna vote down. Both using it as a caretaker suite. And the setback, so what Peter will be working with the proponent on is. Moving the building and no, you can't use it as a caretaker suite, are you okay with Peter proceeding that way? That way it is legally in compliance with the measurements as well as with the zoning being light industrial. So no caretaker suite and he has to move the building is basically what you're voting for.
It's a question for Peter, here once he, let's say moves the building and gets the correct variances. Can the owner then come back and ask for a conditional use for the caretaker suite? Given that he's now complying with the variances?
Yes.
Uh, how does it make it different from another, I own another industrial like company trying to do this? Into the back area to get a residential, you know, what makes him any different, you guys turned him down. For a residential trailer on industrial area, so why are we gonna accommodate him?
If, if each, Peter can probably answer this question also, but each case is very different depending on whether. There's a business or something on the site of, I don't know if we've done a count, but. Uh, there was a count done and there's nineteen caretaker suites within the light industrial already. Uh, some of those have been grandfathered in for years, some have been fairly recent. But it is a conditional use when people are running a business out of there and they're. Allowed to live on there as a caretaker. No one's allowed to buy an industrial lot and then move it, you know, trailer in and live there with no light industrial business. But each case is reviewed by council each time and and the. Each, each one is considered and then there's a recommendation from the development officer. Uh, Peter, any further comments on that?
No, that, that is accurate, um, the, a key test is, uh, that there's a light industrial business on the property. And, uh, usually there's some sort of skilled trades that's required on a relatively frequent basis. And, uh, you know, a trade that may or may not be readily available in, um, in the Mackenzie Delta area. And, uh, you know, accommodation, sometimes the hotels are full and accommodation can be very, very expensive for employers. So it makes sense to have a caretaker suite, or there's a situation where someone has, um. Uh, very valuable property on the site and, uh, you know, a fire or a theft of some kind. Would be, would be a great, potential great, greatly injurious, or there's other situations where it makes sense. Um, the way the bylaw is presently written. It's the, the purpose is to, the purpose of the conditional use is to allow. Council to use its, its great knowledge of the, the people and the community and the culture of the community to. Make decisions that are fitting for the area, uh, based on. Situation and, and the people involved and, uh, but also. Um, it's, this, this bylaw is set up very much to prevent permanent habitation. So that would be people, you know, moving in and basically calling that place home. On a semi-permanent or permanent basis, which permanent is usually defined as thirty days continuous or longer. That's about all I can add.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Peter, is there also a requirement if it's a caretaker suite in a building, isn't, it is. There's a limit to how much of a caretaker suite it is, so it isn't a residence, it is like a. I, I'm not sure what it is, is it twenty-five percent of the building or, you know, i- is there those kind of rules within that as well?
There is some stipulations around that which, uh, the development officer. In this case myself would use to create a recommendation to council, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. Uh, but I would. When I'm reviewing a, a building move to be a caretaker suite, that's one thing I would take into account is the size of the building, but. Are you gonna use the whole building for residence or is, you know, part of it for office space? There, there are some stipulations in the zoning bylaws, as I said, but I, I actually don't have the detail. I'd have to, I'd have to take the actual floor plate of the building and then open up, crack open the zoning bylaw, that effect. But I didn't, it didn't. This application. I don't, I think it fit, if I remember correctly, I remember looking into it and I believe the building fit based on the dimensions I have on the building. I, I, otherwise I wouldn't have made the recommendation for a conditional use. Just don't remember what my calculation was off the top of my head.
Thank you, Peter, Council Barrett, and then Raymond?
I'd like to call a question.
Okay. Before or after Raymond's question?
We can hear from him.
Raymond, one last comment.
They're saying they want a caretaker's place for this business they're running. When they've been in there for the two years they've owned it, there hasn't been one shred of business in front of that shop. So I don't know why they want a caretaker's. Residents, when they don't even do business in there, there's not even a business license for there, for that address, there's no advertisement, nothing. So what, what are they taking care of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, um. So that will be looking into, but we're gonna call the question now. So, remember the motion, eh, what the motion is and whether you're voting for or against the motion. Okay, oh, that's motion, okay. There were approvals regarding the conditional use and the. Uh, variance in the side yard setback, so it's a, what if you call a po- positive motion?
Has to, has to be written in the affirmative.
Right, yeah. Those in favor of. Those in favor of passing this motion. Those opposed to passing this motion. Okay, there's five opposed counting, Council Merrill, motion is defeated. So Peter will uh leave it to you to uh go back to the um owner and. Explain the situation and what they would need to do to be compliant.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter, for coming in and uh taking time for us on your late travels.
My pleasure, always a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you for coming out.
Good night, baby.
All right, item number. All of the, there's no bylaws, all of maybe item number ten.
There's the bylaw now.
Nine, one is first reading amendment for bylaw. The community plan and we'll do these separately, just because they're identified separately.
To clarify, it's the second reading, we've already done the first reading. This is the second.
Second reading for this file. So moved by Council parent.
I'm declaring conflict.
Oh, you're declaring. You're out of here. I'll move. Second. Any further discussion, David? Glad you're still with us.
Mayor, can I give an update on the consultation that we had?
Oh, yes, of course, there's the councilors, some of the councilors were here, Council McDonald was here. But Cost- Coster Merrill was here, so we did have the hearing this evening and uh. Yes, they all just.
So during the hearing and following the agenda, we asked both in writing as well as uh verbally, there's no opposition to it. Uh and there was also none in favor, so. There was no significant opposition, therefore we are recommending that. Second read occur with both of these bylaws to allow potential.
Any further questions, comments from council? All those in favor? Motion carried. Oh, sorry, let us go quick there, we're not waiting for you. Nine, two by law. Municipal Corporation of Town of Anubis, whose territories to amend the zoning by. Comedy for the new hotel. Moved by Council Day, second by Council Carley. The same thing, there was no, no one in favor nor opposed, um. Actually, nobody showed up except for Brandon, so. All those in favor? So there's, sorry, there we we've done the the bylaws. Uh we had all of the department updates on Monday. Information items, got a few more information items and a couple of these. They're asked, they're actually asking whether anyone from council wants to participate, so. First information item, our Department of Economic Development Tourism has pulled together a newsletter. That will go out from the town digitally and then some hard copies distributed throughout town. It features uh Baron Council as well as um. Somebody from each of the departments, it has the pool schedule and then some contact lists and stuff. This would be a newsletter that would be done every two months and then we would rotate. Pictures of the various counselors, pictures of the various staff that we have. It would have calendars for that month or for those two months. That uh that the newsletter covers as well as any other information items that we want to get out to the community. Any thoughts, recommendations, um things that you think should be in the in the newsletter? Feel free to uh contact uh Jenna or myself and we can make sure that those are included. So the next one coming out will be in the new year will be January, February, and then every two months after that we'll get something out and. A lot of it will be digitally for the email addresses we have and then for those people who want a hard copy or. You know, aren't digitally connected to the rest of the world, then we'll have uh hard copies available at some of the bulletin boards and some of the offices and. Places where people might. Okay, um Council Barrow.
Just a point of correction, my name spelled incorrectly on the newsletter.
Let's just make sure that that's.
Yeah, two N's, two R's, two T's. Well, I like the enthusiasm.
All right, we can, we can fix that, that's an easy fix. All right. That's why we're circulating a graph, so good thing you picked it up. Next information item. There, the Regional Wellness Council that is. Well, it was council for the Health Authority is meeting this weekend. The town normally doesn't attend, but I just wanted to let council know that they will be meeting Saturday, November thirtieth. I think it's one until five and I have an agenda of what they're, what what they meet about. It's basically recommendations from the local communities here in the Volker Delta that feed into the overall health authority. If anyone wants more information on that, you're more than welcome to have the bolster and the agenda up that here. The town of Anubis had a seat on, sorry, had a seat on the N W T Association of Communities. And um when the mayor, and their would sat in that seat. So Anubis in a sense has that seat, they uh the. The president for the N W T A C called me, asked me if I would be interested and I said, no, at at this point, I'm not interested. There's enough stuff to do in the town and for the first year, I'm I'm trying not to get involved in any of the territorial or. Federal organizations concentrating on Anubis. Uh but the seat is open to someone from Anubis, so if there is a counselor that would like to participate. At the territorial level with the N W T Association of Communities, there is a seat available. It likely means some trips to Yonai for in-person meetings, the A G M that's coming up the end of February, first of March. And other council, you know, other communications uh throughout the year. So I just want, before we respond to them as a town, we're not interested. I just wanted to check and make sure there weren't any counselors that wanted to participate or. Have an opportunity at the uh territorial level. And I'll also check that the other counselors that aren't here this evening also. The Council McDonald.
Did they give a timeframe on when they need to.
Probably, well, I don't think they're meeting between now and Christmas, so probably we've got until early in the new year. Yeah. And then if we're not interested, then they'll probably go to the next nearest community.
One thing to consider for planning, if you do want to attend uh. The A G M that the mayor have identified, that is the end of February, correct?
Yeah, February twenty-seventh to March second.
So we've already booked a hotel room for a third person to come, myself, the mayor's attending, there is a already a hotel room booked. But if you do are going to volunteer to attend, we would need sooner than later because we will make those wide arrangements for you as well.
But also regardless of whether anyone wants to be on the N W T Association of Communities Board. We also have an extra seat for the A G M just to, just to see the bigger picture, participate during that, during that week. But not actually sit on the board, so there is that also opportunity and if um people can decide whether they. If they are interested in going to um let Sandy know that that. They would be interested in attending the A G M. Um and whether or not they're interested in an actual board provision, so the the two are separate.
A G M's in yellow.
A G M's in yellow, yeah, and all of their in-person meetings are pretty much, they're all in yellow, because all their staff are there, so it's a lot easier to. Bring people in and the post-up move the machine.
They got their A G M and tuck it and do it before other communities.
Oh, they they moved the A G M around, but I mean, the meetings of our board, board meetings, which are virtual and in person. But all of the in-person ones are pretty much always in yellow. Yeah, because they pull people from the south and and the west and the north, so it's just easier to meet there, yeah. Okay, so you can think about that, one, whether you, anyone wants to attend the A G M, uh you'd be, you would leave here the twenty-sixth and get back March second. Uh or whether you would be interested in sitting as a board member. Uh Arctic Energy Alliance is in town next week. And are interested in meeting with town council to discuss what would be involved is as we move forward and do our community energy plan. This is probably something that would not be a mandatory meeting, we'll look at if people are interested. Setting up a a lunchtime meeting where their staff were up that week and they're doing some open houses. And other things would just meet with who's ever available that day next week. Um and then um they would do a presentation on community energy planning and what that specifically means for Anubis. Is there the interest from council in attending something like that that would be over a lunch hour and lunch would be provided? Hey, Council Day, you show up?
I'm a little bit slim next to, so.
You would be right around, okay?
I I fully, yeah, I can probably go.
Okay. You're rounded and pretty, okay, what we'll do, we'll touch base with them tomorrow, perhaps picnic Tuesday or Wednesday. And then we'll let everybody know, again, it's not a mandatory meeting, it's an information meeting and and we would. Have some of our staff here that are also would be involved in working on the community energy plan, but um. Would be a way of of just getting a bit more information and then also providing information on that. Okay, so you'll get, that general circulates some uh information on that, uh probably tomorrow, we'll we'll have that answered. The big news of the day, the pool is opening Saturday. So it will be open and uh and ready for kids. Now, they are going to stage it, so it'll be um. A a limit, I think it's thirty kids for for the swim times as as they ramp up and so that everybody can get. Used to what they're doing and then as 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 the staff get more familiar, then the numbers will increase to what they would would normally be. So that will be Saturday. Council Barrow. There are no fees for the remainder of twenty twenty-four, that is all sponsored by I R C. There's anything else to say on that?
Uh just they can do it, Fire Fighters Association is one of the sponsors as well.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
All all of the uh like the visual attractions, the steam room and and.
So it'll be great to see that, oh, but incredible asset for the community, people have been waiting a long time, so a lot of kids will. Be jumping in the pool for sure, so. We will have a boat launch meeting tomorrow at noon in council chambers. I've invited the Hundreds and Trappers Committee Rep, Renewable Resource Council Committee Rep. Counselor um Wayman and um Council Member are kind of heading, heading that up. Uh we'll have uh staff there, Brendan's coming and um. Got, oh, Jimmy Rutan is going to attend, we tried to pick some, some public that use the boat launch a lot, as well as the Hundreds and Trappers. Renewable Resource Council and um and of course our staff from Infrastructure. Uh we thought we would have kind of December, January to kind of discuss it and plan. And then Infrastructure sent us an email and said, okay, if you want any money from our community access fund, which includes marine facilities. The deadline for the application is December ninth, so we'll probably have two meetings. Uh this Thursday, next Thursday, hold together some numbers that, and it's and it's winter. The winter funding and then hopefully it gets funded again and then we can apply for the summer funding, so we will. We will indicate that it's a two-year project over two fiscal years, but we'll do the planning. Get in some of the equipment, if we want new docks and you know, some of the other stuff that we may need. During the winter and and have that all paid for by March thirty-first and then we would apply for new funding for the um. For the summer when we'd actually get it constructed. But it's been overwhelming overwhelming response and people are. People aren't even coming to the meeting or sending in information on issues that they've had with the boat launch and I think. For quite a while now with the low water levels and uh things that, yeah, people have been damaging boats and it's been difficult to get in and out. And so it's long overdue that we uh that we do some repairs, so that meeting's here tomorrow at at lunchtime.
Is it open?
Um it's it's open to any councilor certainly, yeah, if you uh if you want to attend, feel free to uh to drop in. It's not gonna be a big group, probably with staff and everybody else who's been invited, there might be ten people. And much is provided. Student council rep, we should have a student council rep, maybe in December, but if not in December, um certainly in January. I was over at the school this week, uh made a presentation to student council about what the town does. And that we'd like to have a rep from there, so uh that council would sit right here. So if uh we get a name, we'll we'll run them through the whole process, we'll do the swearing in, we'll do the code of conduct. You know, they'll get a little compass, it'll be everything like regular council, like regular council did and it'll be great to have that youth participation. They won't be officially a counselor, but we can, we can make them, we can make them feel like they're pretty official. And it's a great learning opportunity and I think for the swearing in, we invite the rest of student council, their parents, some of the teachers, because it's. It's a big deal and and it's worth a five thousand dollar bursary to them, or they can work up to a five thousand dollar bursary, they're paid. Just like councilors are so much a meeting and so much for attending day-long sessions and, yeah. And we haven't had one since twenty nineteen, so be great to get the, and it's an ideal candidate to be on the uh. Uh Park and Rex Committee. To get some youth perspective on on that.
Reminder of Aurora College and it's definitely.
Yeah, got those two, um. Aurora College on. The ninth of December, the president Angela James and I think one or two officials at the college are are slated to be at. Our meeting to give a presentation on Aurora College. It's been a community concern for several years now that we have very few full-time in-person programs at the college, so. Just wanted to let everybody know, so you've got two weeks to talk to people, hold together some questions so that we can have a really productive. Productive meeting, I met with our, with the board member from Anubis here, Grant Hood. And expressed some of the concerns that people have been bringing up about, you know, we can have an information technology course here. Just about everybody, you know, is looking for I T people, we can have an information program with all of the. Wildlife and environmental related programs that we've got here, you know, and and if, you know, some of this. Guardianship money is coming north, uh you know, they're gonna need informed people, so there's lots of full-time programs we could have, but we. Right now, there's twenty-five um in-person students and a lot of them go to the college and take online courses, so. At one point, there was probably a hundred and twenty-five students, so there's. They just need to put a little more attention on to this campus, so we'll be delivering that message and be looking forward to questions from all of you on that. Friday is the. Council staff meet and greet at the complex in the community room or downstairs?
Community lounge.
In the community lounge upstairs. So that's the opportunity to meet and greet with all the staff, them get to know you. And just a little bit of gel of the bigger team that were here as council and there, there, as Cindy said, the the runner and the engine. And meeting, taking the time to meet the staff that work for the town, so. Please make sure you can show up for that, it is over lunchtime, if you can only be there for the lunch. Great, if you can be there for the lunch and a little bit of visiting afterwards, that that's great too, but it would be good to have all of council there. And Cindy made it mandatory for all staff to be there because there'll be an all-staff meeting, you know, once once council is done to meet and greet.
So Peter, can I just offer my apologies for not being able to be there, I'll be traveling that day.
Yeah, no, we know you had had identified that you wouldn't be able to be there and. So we'll rely on you to meet every staff member afterwards, Counselor Merrill, once you return.
Absolutely.
Of many ways, so.
Just a reminder.
Yes. So. There wasn't your package and we briefly mentioned it, just wanted to check and see whether anyone had any. Questions on the restructuring of the committees and. Because we don't have everybody here tonight, we don't necessarily have to assign committee members, but give that some thought and then. We'll certainly do that on the meetings on the ninth and the eleventh of December. Uh, we don't have any meetings planned of those committees before the new year. So we've still got a little bit of time to identify which committees everyone would like to sit on. And then you'll see with some of the other committees, like the Development Appeal Committee, that those council members are picked when there's actually an appeal. Made so that. That those will be filled when when the demand is there for that. Any, any questions from anybody about any of the committees, anyone need any more clarification? That is. Everything we have there, except this is also the time, if there's any other comments or updates from. Item number twelve, council comments or concerns?
It's training right now. We didn't get any notifications, so.
It was, they were training when we had fire at the Ninja also, so just lucky they were training then, yeah. Uh, no other comments, concerns, questions from council, okay? I did have one other item on economic development, which I found these in one of the drawers, didn't get a couple on that side. This is done in twenty nineteen, but I I thought from a historical perspective, it's just kind of interesting to see. What at that point people thought the economic development, what was happening in the. In the community and. Because not only is the department going to be, you know, looking at. I mean, not only is economic development and tourism going to be dealing with that, but there'll be several items that come up that. The council may want more information on or may want to consider things. There isn't much, it's only five years, but I told Yuri today, he looked much younger in that picture and didn't have any gray hair. So. Anyway, just, there were, there were lots of copies, I just thought it was a bit of an interesting look back in history, even though it was only five years ago, but. A lot of those things have moved. A lot in the last five years and some things have kind of stayed the same, so it'll be. Be interesting reading and hopefully stimulate a little bit of thought on what we can do. For economic development as we move into twenty twenty-five and also the Arctic Development Expo. But meetings with the D and D and and other potential players who might be contributing to our economy. Anything else? Just made a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor McDonald. Great, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, bye-bye.